I would like to call tonight's meeting of the City of Tacoma Park City Council to order. Would the clerk please call the row?
Mayor Circe.
Here.
Councilmember Fulcher.
Present.
Councilmember Dibala.
Present.
Councilmember Gibson.
Here.
Councilmember Simmons.
Present.
Councilmember Hansak.
Present.
Councilmember Small.
I saw her, yes. So we just saw, excellent. So we hear Councilmember Small making his way to his seat. And Councilmember Dibala, welcome back via Zoom. So tonight, we are, we have no changes to the agenda. Just as a quick reminder, we have public comments tonight. There are no voting items, followed by council comments, as well as city manager comments. The main event for this evening, we only have one item tonight, and that is budget reconciliation, which can be a party. Also, just want to quickly apologize for our delayed start this evening. We had to get a couple papers, and there was a few things that we were looking for to make sure that everybody is ready for tonight's meeting. So just in terms of upcoming agendas, so as I mentioned, tonight, we are just focused on budget reconciliation. On Monday, April 22nd, just as a reminder, Passover begins at sunset, and want to celebrate those that are celebrating Passover on Monday. On Sunday, April 24th, we'll have our regular city council meeting. Public hearing on the FY25 budget will happen on Wednesday, the 24th. We will have a voting session, a resolution supporting the Maple Avenue Association Juneteenth Celebration. And then we will continue in a second budget reconciliation work session to finalize any additional reconciliation that is needed. On Monday, April 29th, the city council will have a special meeting at 7:30, again, finalizing our budget reconciliation. On Wednesday, May 1st, the city council will not meet in order to enable staff to finalize the budget in preparation for our first reading on May 8. And also, just as a reminder for colleagues, on Wednesday, May 8, we will have our regular city council meeting starting at 7:30, and then we will have a voting session, the first reading ordinance adopting the FY25 budget tax rates, the first reading ordinance adopting the FY2025 Stormwater Management Budget, as well as the first reading ordinance adopting the FY2025 budget. On Wednesday, May 15, we will have our next and second voting session on the budget, second reading ordinance adopting the FY2025 but tax rates, second reading ordinance adopting the FY2025 Stormwater Management Budget, the second reading ordinance adopting the FY2025 budget. So with that, we're going to move on to public comments. Do we have any general public comments this evening? Come on down.
Hello, Linda Pence Gunter, Ward 1. I'm just here to check on any progress in drafting a resolution by the City of Tacoma Park embracing the goals and provisions of the Treaty on the Prohibition of Nuclear Weapons, also known as the TPNW. I spoke to this and recommended this resolution some weeks ago, and also submitted links to a resolution template provided by Back from the Brink, the campaign coordinating nationwide resolutions. So this makes drafting such a resolution very quick and easy. It's presumably also entirely non-contentious, given that Tacoma Park is already a nuclear-free city, and was also the first city in the U.S. to declare its compliance with the TPNW. So please, can you let us know whether you are willing to and plan soon to offer and adopt such a resolution? As a reminder, the resolution is basically a replication of U.S. House Resolution 77, introduced in January 2023 and endorsed by, among others, our own Maryland Congressman and favorite Tacoma Park resident, Jamie Raskin. The U.N. Treaty on the Prohibition of Nuclear Weapons, signed by 93 countries and ratified by 70 states parties, includes undertakings not to develop, test, produce, acquire, possess, stockpile, use, or threaten to use nuclear weapons. A Tacoma Park resolution is important because, as Back from the Brink campaign says, there are tangible steps that the U.S. government can take right now to reform our nuclear weapons policy and reduce the threat of nuclear war. When everyday Americans, municipalities, and organizations speak out about these issues, our elected representatives must listen. More than 70 U.S. cities and counties have already passed such a resolution, that the fact that Tacoma Park is not yet among them is something I hope you will quickly rectify. At the end of my remarks, I will hand in this sheet, which contains, again, those URLs that will facilitate the drafting of the resolution. Of course, if the city staff is too busy with other priorities, you could instead offer a motion to reinstate the Nuclear Free Tacoma Park Committee, whose former members would happily draft this resolution for you. We are standing by.
Thank you very much. Do we have any other general public comments this evening?
Arthur David Olson. Herbie Hancock Avenue, Ward 4. The council's finance working group has recommended no change to the railroad and utility tax at this time, stating that as with increases to the commercial property tax rate and rents, historically, increases in this tax are directly passed on to the city's utility rate payers. It's true that increases are passed on. However, I've compared utility bills of mine and of a friend with a 20912 ZIP code who lives outside the incorporated city limits. Both the fixed and monthly charges and the usage-based tax rates and surcharge rates are the same. So Tacoma Park utility taxes are passed on to folks throughout the service area, not just folks in the city. I, for one, would welcome help from Bethesda and Potomac residents in meeting Tacoma Park expenses. The working group also quote-reviewed rates of similar jurisdictions, and the city's rate of $1.75 per $100 of assessed valuation is comparable. That comparability means that the rate is too low. In our situation, where we expect low-income homeowners to pay 50% more in taxes than what's paid elsewhere in the county, it's only fair that we make flush monopolies pay 50% more than what's paid elsewhere. I hope the council will raise the railroad and utility tax rate to, by 50%, to $2.36 per $100 of assessed value, providing a projected revenue increase of $125,000 for the city. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Do we have any other general public comments this evening? Do we have any virtual comments this evening? Excellent. All right, so we're going to move on to council comments. Councilmember Small.
Thank you, Mayor. I appreciate it. Again, will definitely be trying to comport myself with this time limit, insofar as I am really just been exceedingly impressed with the competency of the staff as we moved into this budget round. Like, everything is, like, all the things that I thought were normal are normal here now, and that's to be commended, particularly of the individual departments, because that, from my experience, is the hardest part, is getting people wrangled to both articulate their vision and explain what it's going to cost. So to have this budget in this form is, again, really impressive, and I just wanted to make sure everybody knows that. I think that every single department. I also wanted to say that it's been really interesting, the juxtaposition of how, I don't know, let's go vituperative, this place was before we left for recess, and coming back and just getting down to it and doing mundane city government work, which is what I thought we were going to be in here for. And I just wanted to say that that's also awesome. And in thinking about it, I would just like to, again, say that, you know, like, the basis for some of my frustrations is directly related to quality of life issues as they pertain to Ward 6, and specifically, not only for the residents of the large business centers, whether that be the two larger apartment buildings, or the smaller affordable building, or the neighborhoods. There are some hardcore realities in that area that are being allowed to change at levels that are unfair to residents and businesses and our officers themselves by putting people in a position to have to babysit an entire area. And so I am going to continue to be talking about that, particularly since we're in an election cycle, and in theory, that area ought to be important to everyone who is about to get elected. So I did want to say to our police department that I see you, and I know it's difficult over there, and I know that it's particularly difficult over there, given the new changes in the rules and the manifest decency by which you try to operate now. And I know that it's difficult for the residents, and I know that the purple line has been a horror, and I know that it sucks when preachers come and be angry for Jesus on the weekends. And we're going to try and make sure all of that stops, because I believe in this government now. It's flipping awesome. I'm really excited about it. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Small. Councilmember Gibson.
Yes, first of all, I want to thank the some 16 or 17 Ward 3 residents that attended the Ward 3 budget meeting last Sunday. It was a solid hour and a half of learning and sharing information, and I really appreciate it. It will help me make the decisions that I need to make here. I want to highlight an exciting possibility here, that our new grants manager, Patty Malin, is, they're developing a grant proposal for illegal dumping at the Sligo Mill Road, and looking for a letter of support from the residents there, Pinecrest residents. But I think they're excited, and I'm excited about it. That's an area that's just been, it's been, it's literally a dumping ground, so I appreciate her work, and I'm looking forward to that proposal's success. Lastly, I want to just say that I think we ought to look at this TPNW and see if we can sign it. I'll need to look again at it, and I would appreciate if the city would review whether we can consider it and pass a resolution. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Gibson. Councilmember Hansak.
Thank you. Thank you to all the speakers who came out tonight, and I also want to acknowledge that I see, I see two of my Ward 5 residents, and particularly want to highlight my youth back there. Hi, Shenna. It's good to see you. We don't get to see many of you, so you get called out. Thank you for joining us tonight. I wanted to share some of the places and spaces that I've been this week to tell you what I think is a really exciting things going on in the city and in our ward. One is, I want to say a great big thank you to our police department for showing up at Silver Spring International Middle School this past week. I didn't even get a chance to put it in my notes. It was really an incredible conversation, in my humble opinion. This was the first ever, that I'm aware of, where they attended a cafecito, which is held with Spanish-speaking parents. We looked far and wide to try to find opportunities where we can connect with our Ward 5 Spanish-speaking and other residents who are harder to reach, and this is one of several pilots that we're trying to see what we can institutionalize and make more part of regular business. It was very well-attended, and together as a team, we worked to make that space really safe, and I thought a lot of interesting concepts came out of the discussion about how we could, if we do this again with a Spanish-speaking community, how we could do it even better, as sort of like, what is the order of questions and issues that we need to address before the room felt like a place where people were ready to share? So that was really interesting, including starting with talking about our sanctuary city status, and what happens if the county or the city police have an encounter with you? Are they going to ask about your residency? And also, what happens when you call 911 or 311? How do you get somebody who speaks Spanish? So these were some really important, really, really important basics that we needed to start off with, and they kept coming back, actually, to that as we were continuing the conversation, people basically saying, is it really true? I've had different experiences. So I just want to share that with people, because it's just really, really hard to connect with communities that don't feel safe, and this was so important to me, and I got to go to that, and there were a bunch of Ward Five residents there, and it was extremely well-attended at the library. If you've never been, I highly recommend it. It was incredible. There were bicycles, radios, sewing, all kinds of really cool things going on, and it was a neat place to see people across the community coming together. And then finally, I just want to say how excited I am about this weekend. The Friends of Sligo Creek will be leading the regular annual cleanup down in the creek in multiple parts, and then the city is hosting the Earth Day celebration, and I'm just so excited that this is in Ward Five or adjacent to us and that we can connect with our residents and celebrate sustainability and really talk to one another and explore these things. And right, I will have a table there. Please come see me, especially if you're in this part of the city, especially young people. We're going to be making stickers for the upcoming Flower Avenue Celebration to hang on Flower Avenue in Erie about diversity and inclusion, and there's a sticker-making contest, and if you're in my ward, you know all about it, but please consider, everyone across the city is invited to participate in the diversity and inclusion sticker-making competition. So thank you. Thanks for the extra time.
Thank you. Councilmember Hanzak. Councilmember Foulter.
Thank you, everybody, for coming tonight. Thank you, Mrs. Gunter, for your comments, and Mr. Olson for yours. And so I held, I also held a budget meeting last night, and I want to thank my two attendees, Megan Scrivner and Tom Gagliardo. We had interesting conversation about the budget and other things as well. I have a meeting this Friday with a resident, Allegra Kangalosi, who's very interested in how the city handles our stream water when we're doing plantings there, which we have a couple of those planned in the future, so I appreciate the citizen activism there. I will also be at Earth Day over in Ward Five this Saturday, probably helping out with whatever Councilmember Hanzak tells me to do. And then I have another budget meeting this Sunday at 3:00 PM that is actually in the building. We'll be here 3:00 to 4:30. We will quickly end at 4:30 as to not have any staff staying here later on a Sunday than they are supposed to. And that is all for me. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Foulter. Just want to do a quick check for Councilmember Dabala to see if she has any, okay, perfect. Councilmember Dabala, you have the floor.
Thank you. Three things. One, thanks very much to everybody on the city staff and council, and especially Ward Two residents, who've been very gracious the last week for supporting me as I've had kind of a tough week, but we're through it and on the road to recovery, and as you can see, at least virtually, I'm back. So second thing, please do, Ward Two residents, send me your budget comments because I have not been able to organize a meeting to talk with you about the specifics. And I lied. Four. Third, for Linda Gutner, thank you for your comments. I did not get a chance last week to point out during the state legislative update that we did submit comments from the city on the state bill related to nuclear disarmament. And in Russia doing that, I think the other one didn't happen yet. So last, I had one question, a general overview question about the budget that I would, not sure when to ask it, so I'll ask it now and let the city manager decide whether to address this tonight or whether, if I miss something maybe, to just email me the story. We all got an updated, revised, proposed budget book, and I'm not remembering what changed to prompt us to get a revised budget book. And so that's it for me. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Dabala. Just checking to see, okay, I have no more lights. Just want to thank everyone, particularly the Co-op, who organized the Earth Day event on Sunday. It was really great, had an opportunity to speak before the crowd, and I want to thank all of our staff that came out and did table hosting to remind members in our community about a number of the different sustainability activities that we have going on in the city. So want to thank Mike and Co-op for hosting that event, and also want to thank our staff for participating on Sunday. Quick thing, I will try to make it to Earth Day. I have unfortunately a learning collaborative cohort that I'm a part of, and we are meeting on Friday and on Saturday, but I'm going to miss one segment of that to make sure that I'm able to make sure that I'm at Earth Day because, you know, it's Tacoma Park, and it is important for us to make sure that we're celebrating Earth Day. And I do just want to check one more thing. Also want to ensure that if members of council are hosting budget meetings, I'm happy to participate. So Councilmember Foulter, I'm happy to participate in the Sunday meeting. We really are available to answer any questions that people may have in terms of the budget. But one thing I will say, while we are getting ready to dive into the budget, is I want to thank our staff even before we jump into discussions around the budget, because I've actually said that this has perhaps been one of the easiest budget processes that we've had in some time, and it's due in large part to the collaborative nature of our staff, but also the fact that we, although we didn't get the budget done as quickly as we liked, we did start thinking about the budget quite early, and my colleagues have done things like forming finance subcommittees. We updated our budget calendar, and we also had lots of discussions around the priorities that we have as a council in terms of what we want to fund in the budget, and I think that that has gone a long way to help us in terms of the things that we'll do tonight with reconciliation. But I do just want to thank our staff for all of the work that you all have done in the budget and in addition to all of the other work that we have transpired. Last thing, big thing, almost forgot to mention it. City of Tacoma Park, I want to thank our communication staff and everyone that worked on hosting NLC, the National League of Cities, of which the City of Tacoma Park is a member of. They are doing their 100th anniversary. They have a big bus that they have been going around to different municipalities across the country, just highlighting the great things that NLC members have been doing, and the City of Tacoma Park was selected. And so Councilmember Dabala and myself was able to meet up with the president of NLC as well as take lots of photos in front of the bus and to just highlight some of the wonderful things that NLC has done for the City of Tacoma Park by providing resources to us to kind of tackle important issues. So there's probably lots of pictures and things that are posted on social media, but want to thank our staff that did a lot.
Mayor, can I, I'm sorry. I was really impressed that Councilmember Dabala came out for that, like her devotion to the city.
Yes.
To come out of her house right now after going through surgery. I was, I like looked at a few different sources to be like, is this an older pick? Like, I couldn't believe that she did that for us, so really appreciate that.
Really appreciate it.
I'd just like to say as a point of order, when it was kind of funny that you stammered on the whole communications department part, when you were being really articulate the whole time, and then you said.
I know. Well, it's because I don't refer to comms in my other life. It's a different name, but, so I had to pause myself. Yes, I was about to call them a different title of comms in another part of my life. But I do just want to again thank Councilmember Dabala for coming out because she has been working on, for many years, on different boards at NLC and supporting different groups, and so to have her be a part of that was really, really special. And so thank you for coming out, Councilmember Dabala, as we were doing the tour.
If I may, for just a moment, I appreciate that I was able to do that. That was my first outing, and after that, I was pretty much done for the day, but it was great to be, to be with the National League of Cities folks from all over the country, and I would like to pass on to our staff, to our Old Town Business Association, their enthusiasm about our downtown area on a weekday morning and how impressed they were with just the whole setup, the whole scene, the people, the sculpture, the benches, everything.
Yeah.
Maybe feel proud.
Yes, so super excited to show off our city, and thank you, Councilmember Dabala, also for all of the work that you do at NLC, representing the city well. Okay, so with that, I'm going to turn things over to our city manager for city manager comments.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and members of council, and our guests this evening. First of all, wanted to, before we, just momentarily, we'll be into the budget discussions, as you indicated, with respect to Councilmember Dabala's question regarding the revised budget document that was supplied, posted publicly and supplied to the mayor and council. During that discussion, the finance director and I will summarize what adjustments were made. There were some corrections and some additions and some things that, of course, we'll call out the salient points when we get into the budget discussion, but thank you for that question, Councilmember Dabala. Also, building on what the Madam Mayor said with respect to the budget process, I want to use this opportunity to thank the mayor and council members for making time to join some of my staff and I in some individual briefings on the proposed budget that happened in the weeks in advance of the document being publicly released and even some afterwards. That gave us an opportunity to get an early read on questions and concerns and comments from members of the mayor and council as we represent the residents, and also for us to try and answer some questions and provide additional information. And we gave a presentation individually to council members so that we hoped it would be a better preparation for going into what can sometimes be a very confusing process. So it's been a great team effort. Mayor and council have absolutely been central to that team, and I just wanted to publicly thank the mayor and council for your willingness to work with staff to that degree as we've moved into this, to the point that we are now. So a little bit of news from the departments. The Housing and Community Development Department, some upcoming events. On Tuesday, April 23rd at 6:00 PM, please join Montgomery College for a virtual meeting, providing updates on the Leggett Math and Science Building and the Library Resource Center renovation projects. A registration link will be included tomorrow in the posted city manager's comments in the city website. Also, on Tuesday, April 23rd at 7:00 PM, please join our code enforcement team at the Community Center Auditorium as they host Nancy Lawson, founder of The Humane Gardener LLC, as she presents a program entitled "How to Gently Fight Plants with Plants Using Native Plants to Crowd Out Invasives." And next Friday, April 26th at 7:30 PM, in the Community Center Auditorium, the Tacoma Park Arts Series presents "Percussion Discussion Taps Into Happiness." Performance. Percussion discussion includes three groups at different age and experience levels. Each ensemble has their own repertoire, and they will collaborate with an intergenerational performance for the public. Two Montgomery planning hearings are slated for this week that impact Tacoma Park. Firstly, the Historic Preservation Commission will hear three applications for historic area work permits in Tacoma Park on Wednesday, April 17th, including a proposal from the city for the installation of a bus shelter at 6951 Carroll Avenue. Secondly, on Thursday, April 18th, tomorrow, the Montgomery Planning Board will hear an administrative subdivision application for the creation of two single-family lots at 37 Oswego Avenue. And the City Tacoma Park law maintains the affordability of rental units by limiting the number and amount of rent increases charged for a specific rental unit. Generally, the rent may be increased only once in any given 12-month period. The annual allowance is set by the percentage change in the Consumer Price Index, or CPI, for the period of March to March. Beginning July 1st, 2024 through June 30th, 2025, the rent stabilization allowance is Landlords are required to comply with Tacoma Park's rent stabilization law and cannot increase the rent on occupied units any higher than this allowance. From our police department, our next Coffee with a Cop program will be on Tuesday, April 23rd, at Cielo Rojo Restaurant at 7211 Carroll Avenue. Come join us for a cup of coffee and a chat. No agenda or speeches, just a chance to ask questions, voice concerns, and get to know your officers in your community. We will be there from 11:30 AM to 1:30 PM, and we look forward to seeing you. From the Public Works Department, in honor of Earth Month, the City of Tacoma Park will host a celebration in the Sligo Creek Stream Valley Park at 8101 Sligo Creek Parkway on Saturday, April 20th, from 10:00 AM to 2:00 PM. This location is in close proximity to the new playground on the Sligo Creek Parkway at Houston and Kennebec Avenue. The event will feature exhibitors from 27 local partners. Snow cones, face painting, art activities, and educational materials about sustainability will be available for the whole family. Come check out the EV showcase, attend a guided tree walk, and learn about the various environmental opportunities in our community. The rain date is Sunday, April 21st. Report from my office, before shout-outs, I just want to mention that I benefited greatly from, yeah, today I met with Tacoma Park Volunteer Fire Department Chief Willie and President Elmer Hamm and had a tour of the station. Had a great opportunity to talk about how volunteer fire department and the city have been partners and what are their challenges and what are the prospects for us to become better partners in the community as they protect us. I also benefited from a tour of Piney Branch Elementary School conducted by Principal Christine Oberdorff and some of her staff. Public Works Director Darrell Braithwaite joined me, and we, certainly it helped orient me to some of the challenges that they have with the building, as well as gave me an opportunity to convey the degree to which the mayor and council continue to support an eventual CIP project through the county, and perhaps in the interim, some improvement projects that might come through other divisions of the county. And there's a follow-up meeting that I'm going to be conducting with the Facilities Department head at the county to discuss all of these things. A shout-out this week from the police department. As we celebrate National Public Safety Telecommunicators Week, I want to take a moment to express my deepest gratitude to our city's police dispatchers for their unwavering dedication and commitment to our community's safety. The following individuals comprise that team. Danielle Gallup, Armani Keys, Catherine Maske, Diana Garcia, Favin Teklu, and Lydia Teklu. Dispatchers are the calm voices, the lifelines for those in distress, and the first responders behind the scenes. Their tireless efforts ensure that our police department are able to respond swiftly and effectively to every call for help. Their role as dispatchers is not merely answering phones and relaying information. It's about being the crucial link between those in need and the help that they may require. Their ability to stay composed under pressure and to think quickly on their feet, as well as provide reassurance to those in a crisis, is essential to their roles. During this special week dedicated to honoring the invaluable contributions of our public safety telecommunications professionals, I want to extend my heartfelt appreciation to each and every dispatcher. Thank you for your service and your unwavering commitment to keeping our community safe. And finally, from our Recreation Department.
Here, here, by the way, on that, totally here.
Here, here, by the way, on that, totally here.
From our Recreation Department, I would like to congratulate Recreation Assistant Director Debbie Huffman for receiving several awards at the Maryland Recreation and Park Association Conference. Debbie received the following awards. Number one, Outstanding Member of the Year. Number two, she was involved with the Committee of the Year. And she also received the President's Award from that organization. And finally, the Recreation and Leisure Services Branch, Outstanding Recreational Professional of the Year. Those are just amazing accolades and congratulations Debbie. The city is so proud of the work that you do and we're blessed to have you.
Rob, as point of order, I'd just like to say that it's bad bossing that Greg didn't bring her tonight to be lauded tremendously. And if you could see fit as to make sure that she shows up so that we could sweat her, that'd be great.
Absolutely.
Boo. Yeah, but come on Greg.
Well, I think that, I think that there is a desire to have a little bit of a Debbie love fest for just one second. Councilmember Hansak, you have the floor.
Thanks, Mayor. Saying her name, I just have to tell a great Debbie story that goes behind the scenes and people wouldn't know. So when I came into this office, I was passionate about seeing that our Direct Cash Assistants and our Chromebooks went out to those who were most in need in our city. And Debbie just reached out her arm, little quiet email, and said, "How can I help you?" And she ended up figuring out, in collaboration with me in the county, when she advocated for, I believe, as well, and if anybody else I didn't know that went unseen, helped her with this. All I saw was her communicating back to me. She ended up advocating for making sure that we had Chromebooks available to residents in Ward 5, free Chromebooks at a time when people really, really needed them. And she sent me, every time there was a new posting that they were going to share them at Long Branch Community Center, she made sure that I was specifically in the know that those slots were made available to our residents and then I was able to shoot them out to our Ward 5 residents. And I just want to say, thank you Debbie. That kind of outreach is so incredibly powerful for us in Ward 5 and for every resident across the city that needs you.
Direct Department, direct shop, they do. There's a good department.
Since we're talking on the awesomeness, that is Debbie. You know, just one, congratulations on all of the wonderful awards. Very much well deserved. And I think the true testament is just her disposition. She is everywhere with a smile and then welcoming all open arms, ensuring that people in our community are having fun and enjoying themselves and we're providing the necessary services to our youth. And so I want to join everyone in thanking Debbie and congratulating her on making us proud as a city with the plethora of awards that she's received recently. So thank you so much Debbie.
Again, boo, Greg, boo.
Well, it's official. It's official Debbie rocks. That concludes my report this evening and thank you for your comments. I'm sure they're very meaningful to the employees.
Excellent. Well, now we're going to move on to the main event. Budget reconciliation. So just as a reminder for colleagues, the way that budget reconciliation works, if there are any modifications that you would like to propose for the budget, you want to make sure that we are aware, we can kind of talk through them today. Staff will make sure that they are noted on the budget reconciliation list. Because of the meeting on Monday, I know that there are some folks that are still trying to work through questions on things. We're not going to take votes on any reconciliation items today. What we're trying to do is really just identify items that may be ripe for reconciliation, including those where you may need more information before you make a final decision about what you want to put forward. So our staff has already shared the budget reconciliation spreadsheet. And just as a reminder for folks, this is the spreadsheet that we use historically to keep track not only of the things that we want to propose modifying for the budget, but also to kind of help folks with seeing in real time the impact of those changes on either the tax rate or our reserve amounts or our special revenue fund balances in real time. So are there any general questions about just how this process is going to work this evening before I kind of hand things over to staff where they can walk us through things that are already on the reconciliation list? Councilmember Gibson.
So I wasn't entirely sure. There are items that I and I'm sure other council members are interested in submitting reconciliation items and we don't have all the information, we don't have the numbers. It's, so I guess I'm hesitant to go into it if we don't have that. So, I mean, so I need a little bit more guidance in terms of what you're looking for.
Sure, sure, sure. So just as a-
Mayor.
Mayor, I would move that we have enough reconciliation items tonight and we just move forward.
Move with what we have.
Yeah.
I mean, it's going to be a multi-day process.
Yep, I was just about to say that, yeah. So just as a reminder for folks, we have a total of three reconciliation meetings. So we have two more. So we have the meeting tonight. Next Wednesday is an additional budget reconciliation meeting. We are also meeting on Monday for budget reconciliation. So we have a total of three reconciliation meetings. The goal is on that Monday for us to be prepared to vote and finalize that reconciliation list. So I do, while I know that we have some items that are on the list right now, I do want to encourage folks that if there are things that you are considering, to please speak up so that folks will have enough time to gather any information that you need because that next budget reconciliation meeting will be that place where we really want to get a clean list because we'll need to vote on that third reconciliation meeting.
And I would also say, Mayor, as a point of order, we did get that email that said what the staff needs in order to get it on so that it is in the spreadsheet before the meeting. So we do have at least two more theoretical bites at the apple, but the second, or the first one coming up is probably the most important one.
Exactly, because we'll need to get ready to vote for the third one. Okay, all right. Are there any other questions about reconciliation before I hand things over to staff so they can kind of walk through? All right, awesome. So with that, I'm going to turn things over to our City Manager.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And you see in the audience, we have some of our department heads physically present. I just want to point out that the others are joining us virtually. So you have access to all of us and we wish to be able to answer any questions or contribute as you need. But everybody's engaged tonight. There was this early question about what was in the budget, the revised budget document that just recently went out. And I'd just like to ask Susan if she could just give a, just a, of the more salient things that were adjusted in that version, just for the benefit of the mayor and council, if you would, please.
Sure. Mayor and council member, there are minor changes in the budget document mainly due to some of the questions that is raised by the citizen. When they were reviewing the budget document, they noted there are some minor percentage change, maybe 0.05%, and some spacing change or some number supposed to be fiscal year '25 and it was put in the budget as '24. And also the major change of this budget document is mainly due to the tax duplication because we were thinking about the net amount, the net difference of $28,000 reduction from the prior year, but actually the amount has increased. The reduction amount has been increased and it is each tax duplication category, the net amount has been changed. So that's why I need to make this adjustment in the budget document. And I can list everything that I changed, send it to you guys in an email. These were all minor changes and there's no significant difference from the original document.
Thank you very much. And just for my colleagues, I think we were all aware that there were issues with tax dupe estimates, not just impacting the city of Tacoma Park, but impacting all of the municipalities in the county. Okay, so those adjustments, and I just want to confirm with Director Chung. So the tax dupe number that we're seeing here in the reconciliation items by funding category, so are we saying that that 764 is the correct adjustment, the full adjustment here?
Yes, because the original document in the FY '25 proposed budget shows a reduction, a net reduction of 28. So actually, in fact, we found out last night, it should have been 28,764. So that's why we need to have a reduction of $764 from the tax duplication. And this is from our general fund revenue.
Okay.
So the spreadsheet, the reconciliation spreadsheet is actually divided into two sections. The calculation part is on the left-hand side and the information part is on the right-hand side. So the left-hand side, when you look at the, it's kind of color-coded. We purposely put green as the revenue of each fund and there are many different funds included on the left side of the column. And the revenue side is color-coded with salmon color and the expenditure is in salmon color, I'm sorry. And on top of each section, we have the original revenue and expenditure and then we have the revised revenue and expenditure. And the difference between the original and the revised, we show it as the changes in revenue and the changes in expenditure. And any changes in expenditure and revenue will affect our unassigned reserve balance. The original unassigned reserve balance is 51,593,162. And because of the changes in expenditure and revenue, now the reserve is changed to $5,190,398. And then followed by the general fund, we have the Stormwater Fund. The original revenue is 775. The original expenditure is 779,438,000. And then we have special revenue, $2,005,000. Special revenue expenditure is $5,003,000. The major difference between the revenue and expenditure is because of the CIP project that we have in the library and that is totaling 2.5 million. That's why we have a huge difference between the special revenue and expenditure. And then we have the speed camera and the red light camera revenue, $1.9 million. The speed camera and red light camera expenditure, $1.8 million. So in FY '25, we're showing a surplus of about $40,000. And then followed by that is the ARPA fund. We have the ARPA fund revenue and the ARPA fund expenditure. And a lot of the budget reconciliation item tonight is included in the ARPA fund expenditure. So we can see there's a long list here. Some of them were proposed by the City Manager and some of them were proposed by Councilman Gibson. And then I want to point out that the available unallocated fund in the ARPA fund is $1.16 million. That means this is the fund that is available to be used in the ARPA and that has not been allocated to different type of projects. But the total that we listed above is $1.9 million. So we have to try to reduce the expenditure for about $30,000, make sure that we are within the budget of $1.16 million because this is what has been available for the unallocated amount in the ARPA expenditure. And then on the right-hand side, we have all those revenue and expenditure information. The proposed general fund revenue is $30 million. The proposed general fund expenditure is $32 million. And the tax revenue, assuming 55.22, which is the same tax rate as last year, will let us have $16,401,186 in revenue in the general fund. And if we were to use the constant new tax rate, the rate is 53.18 cents, we will have the revenue of $15.7 million. And there is two line items here as the mayor just mentioned. Any impact on the revenue and expenditure on the left-hand side spreadsheet will result in the changing of the unassigned reserve balance and this change will be real-time. And also it'd impact the percentage of the unassigned fund balance to the general fund revenue. So with all these changes in the general fund, it render us to 16.96% instead of 17% of our original general fund reserve percentage. And then we have the following part is the fund balance of our different funds. General fund total fund balance is $12 million. General fund unassigned reserve is $5.1 or $5.2 million. Stormwater management fund balance is $157,000. Special revenue fund balance is $610,000. And speed camera and red light camera fund will be $89,000 and ARPA fund will be $350,000 by the year-end of fiscal year '25. This is the ending balance at the end of fiscal year, estimated balance at the end of fiscal year '25. And then the notes below shows that each cent of our tax rate will render us $297,000. And then the tax rate is, as last year, is 0.5522. Constant new tax rate again is 0.5318. And then our accessible tax rate is $2.9 billion. Okay, and this is available, this accessible tax rate is available on our constant new tax certificate which we receive on February 14th.
Thank you so much. It would be helpful to just do a walkthrough of the City Manager proposed adjustments to ARPA. Just so, because I have a couple of questions about whether or not certain things that maybe are being proposed may be accounted for elsewhere, so.
Sure, happy to. So when I presented the ARPA budget, there was a slide that talked about these programs as being possible or recommended reallocations of that 1.16 million that we have. So the initial recommendation, the food security program, there's $70,000 in there for FY '25 in the current budget right now, which is down $20,000 from the 90 we've had each year. And the $155,000 would round that out, so it would be $90,000 again in FY '25. And then it would also be funding forward because this is something we could obligate with a three-year grant, you know, grant agreement with folks for FY '26 and the first half of FY '27, which brings us to the end of our ARPA spending deadline. So that sort of rounds that program out to the full eligibility of the ARPA program. Quality of life grants, we had $110,000 in the FY '24 budget. We were able to find $50,000 within the general fund to ensure some ongoing sustainability of that program. But the recommendation here would be to bring it up to the funding level that we had in FY '24. So that's an additional $60,000 to get to the $110. We also have an ongoing, an open grant program right now that Ira talked about a bit during his presentation on Monday, the multifamily and energy efficiency grants. We've gotten some great applications. This would allow us to accept more or, you know, higher dollar value amounts for that program and we could again allocate it very quickly. Talked about this too, but actually have a specific number to it. This is a equipment replacement. If you remember, we're, we're expending about 1.1 million from our ERR this year. Uh, and that's just in flat expenditures. Um, and we were, we were going to balance that by using 900,000 in reserves, uh, to, to supplement the fund, which is a little bit below what our target is and what our formula says for the long-term sustainability of the ERR. So we specifically designated two, um, two purchases within the current FY25 CIP that are slated to come out of ERR. They would instead be funded through the ARPA, ARPA fund. And that's the HVAC control system and emergency generator. And you can see those in the, in the CIP. Um, street, street, ma- street maintenance. We currently have 425,000 in, uh, ARPA dollars going to street maintenance in the CIP with an additional 100,000 coming out of the general fund. This would be an additional 125,000 on top of the current FY25 budget of 525,000, for a total of 650,000 for street maintenance in FY25. Um, and then library redevelopment, we've talked a bit about that. This would be, again, additional funding, uh, on top of, you know, the already 14 million dollars that's, uh, was currently budgeted for the library project, total allocation from various sources, that went through FY25. This is an additional 500,000 on top of that for our, some of our overages and, uh, and contingency fund. We also have, uh, if you remember from the original city manager's presentation, uh, an additional 600,000 that we're assigning from fund balance as well to cover contingency. Uh, we would spend this 500,000 first because we need to spend and obligate it, obviously, within our timeframe. Um, and then the, the final two on here were, uh, requests from Councilmember Gibson, as noted. And the performance measurement program, which the city manager has, has spoken to a number, number of times. There are a, a few different ways we could fund that, that 30,000. We have it in ARPA right now as sort of a placeholder. But, you know, there are a couple of different ways we could decide to, to fund that, so. Yeah.
Um, quick question. So for the increase in equipment replacement, the facilities piece where we're taking from the CIP, the HVAC, does that have impacts on the general fund availability? Like, should that, are we doing like a full switch? A full swap of, um, general fund items? Pulling them from the general fund and, and using ARPA dollars for them? Or is this like some added new cost that we, you know, didn't anticipate? I'm just, I'm just trying to see, does this basically mean that, that we have freed up, basically, almost 200K?
I wish, I wish that were true. It's not true. Uh, cause our, our ERR, uh, we don't base our tax rate on ERR expenditures, right? So we don't raise dollars specifically for the ER. So, uh, so, no, it's just the, there will be less reduction in the total ERR at the end of the day because we're using our, our ARPA funds.
Okay, so it's just basically there's still additional monies left in the reserve?
Correct.
Okay.
Yep.
Right. And one other question that I have is about the, um, and I guess this question is for Councilmember Gibson because I know that we increased the street maintenance, which is something we, I, I, I agree with, that we wanted to make sure that we did. But the replacing of the Boyd Alley apron, um, is that, um, and, and I'm familiar with the, the project, I'm familiar with that. I'm just trying to make sure of where this project, either whether or not it was in queue, because I know this has been around for a while, or, um, whether or not it's can be accounted for in some other place with it? No, I'm, I see Daryl shaking her hand, no. So, so that's the one that would require a full overhaul for that apron to kind of deal with that stormwater, right?
If I, I might say, uh, I was certainly prepared to offer it as a reconciliation last year. Uh, it was in my queue, but because we had a tax rate increase, that I did not offer it. And it's been, uh, certainly, uh, considered by various, uh, council members and, and finance folks by the city previously. So it's not, obviously, you know, it's not a new thing.
Yeah.
But, uh, so, and, and it doesn't fit nicely under sidewalks. It doesn't fit nicely under street resurfacing.
So it's, it's put in here as, or, okay.
And, uh, uh, obviously, if this is not the place where the money should come from, I, I, I don't really care. Uh, I don't think that the residents care. But ARPA seems like, uh, it has that, that kind of flexibility for this odd item.
Okay, City Manager Disparro.
Yeah, I do believe this is the appropriate place to, uh, source it if the mayor and council wish to support this. It, I've had an opportunity to go out in person and, and look at the site and, uh, discuss it, uh, with, uh, a number of the neighbors. Walked, uh, the alley, uh, which is a city alley. And, uh, I'm personally convinced there's a need there and I could support this for what that's worth. Uh, we are offering that, of course, as an option for your consideration. But I do believe ARPA is a one-time expense. Uh, this is an appropriate use of, uh, ARPA funds, uh, to, uh, apply to that.
Do just want to triple-check, um, uh, and I guess this question is for Director Braithwaite. This particular, uh, project, would it, is this something, and, and if you wouldn't mind just refreshing my memory? I, I distinctly remember this one being one that's pretty, and, you know, involved, but.
Yeah, we've had, uh, an engineering firm out to develop a design and we have that available and have shared that with council before. Again, this project was initially done in 2013 and we hadn't heard anything complaint-wise until 2020. Each year after that, it was brought to council that if they wanted to identify it as a project, it would need to be identified separately. It was not one that the city departments were promoting to be included in the budget. And, um, no action was taken until now. So, um, we don't have it in our list of projects to do. It was specifically, uh, waiting for funding from the council.
Okay, okay. And this is the, the rough estimate, or is there a possibility, you know, sometimes once things kind of?
No, I think that we're very comfortable with that amount.
Okay.
Councilmember DiBala here. Are you, may I ask?
Yes, I'm sorry, Councilmember DiBala, I can't see your hand or anything. So yes, go right ahead.
Thank you for letting me, um, interrupt. Uh, so, uh, Director Braithwaite, please explain why this doesn't fit in where, with any of the existing programs? And how often does this happen? I, I afraid, I'm afraid I'm drawing a blank on discussing this previous, in previous years, and I don't remember the answer to that. Cause it would seem to me like it should come up in one of the programs we have as regular business, like every other project.
Thank you, Councilmember DiBala. I, I might be best suited to forward you the previous, um, information that council was provided last year and the year before in regard to this project. And I think that will probably help illuminate, uh, the situation there. Basically, in 2013, the city did an ADA sidewalk compliance on Boyd Avenue and the, uh, apron to the alley was changed at that point. It met our design standards, it meets ADA compliance. So, uh, again, not until 2020 was the issue first raised. Um, I think it was more associated with changes in people's vehicles and the impact that the steep driveway, uh, alleyway entrance had. So we've identified it year by year as a project that would be considered a special project if the council wanted to, um, identify funds for that.
And it doesn't fit neatly into some of the other categories. It's not a street project per se, it's not a sidewalk project per se. It's a repair to a right-of-way and a combination of apron, sidewalk and, and alley. Uh, so it is kind of a one-off type of, uh, repair situation. Uh, I can see where a portion of the alley has recessed over time, perhaps even since 2013, making the issue more prevalent than it might have been earlier. There's also a drainage, uh, component there that, uh, might be improved with this project, uh, stormwater runoff. So, uh, also there are about nine properties or so that utilize.
Nine, there are 10 properties.
10 properties utilize this, uh, alley. And that, then that access, not just one property owner. So there is a, at least a number of residents, uh, that, uh, are, um, I guess would, would benefit from an improvement to the situation.
If I might just.
Councilmember Gibson?
Just to add, yeah, there are anywhere from 15 to 19 vehicles. And, and as, uh, the city manager said, uh, there are, um, actually, there are 10, 10, um, uh, red, um, building, nine single-family buildings, one multi-family building with six apartments. So, yes, we have a, a number of people that use that, that area. And, uh, we, our cars, like a Prius, are lower than they were in 2013.
Thank you, Councilmember Gibson, Councilmember Fulter.
I was wondering, what was the amount that was spent in 2024, the budget, 2024 budget for, uh, street maintenance?
Sorry, I missed that question if it was directed to me.
The, uh, amount that we spent in 20, the fiscal year 2024 on street maintenance?
Two-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars.
Okay, thank you.
And that's street restoration versus maintenance, you know, maintenance is kind of a broader term, but the resurfacing of streets was 250,000.
And, uh, Director, what is the amount that was recommended as optimal on an annual basis?
Yeah, in 2004, the council, uh, reviewed our street restoration program and, uh, recommended 500,000 dollars per year towards street, uh, restoration as a, as a program goal to main street, maintain streets in fair and better conditioning.
We've been a little behind that for a few years.
Yes.
Due to very, very, well, the pandemic and tighter budgets, yeah.
Yeah, we provided a, uh, 20-year history of our expenditures on roadways and I think our average expenditure based on that over the past 20 years has been about 425,000 dollars. So we haven't made our 500,000 over the past 20 years.
Councilmember Fulter, do you have another question?
No, I'm sorry.
Hi.
Madam Mayor, I'm sorry to interrupt, but there's something that's happening right now.
This is Councilmember DiBala. I have a question on this topic, if it's appropriate to talk right now.
Um, hold on, hold on one second. There's something happening right now?
Yeah.
Okay, please come forward.
Thank you, Mayor. Right now, up in the 7200 block of Carroll, which is Tacoma Junction, there are six or seven trucks. They are going to implement the SHA's plans for restriping the junction this evening, including removing the first portion of the second eastbound lane of Carroll directly in front of Sela Rojo, where they take their deliveries, which would no longer be possible. Removing that second lane will also limit the fire department's options in terms of getting out of the station. The lane closest to the sidewalk is usually often full and that second lane is a lifesaver for the engines when they need a way to get out, when they're turning right. I consulted with Captain John Pepple of the Fire Department a couple of weeks ago. And on Monday, I met with him, Delegate Moon, and Chief of Staff to Larg Charcutian and Janelle Wilkins. We were on-site. He reiterated to Delegate Moon, uh, his concerns about the implications of that for the fire department. It's happening tonight. No notice, no consultation with the fire department and all the other problems that I could outline for you. I would ask you, please, if it's within your power, to call those trucks off because it's happening as we speak.
Thank you very much. Um, so I just want to follow up, have the city manager follow up with the appropriate staff to make sure.
Yes, we just found out about the timing and, uh, we put information out about that today. I personally met with the Fire Department, myself, with the chief and the president of the Fire Department today and did share that information with them today, since we just learned about the timing. And, uh, I understand the concerns. The city's previously shared with SHA our concerns with the project, but, uh, they were very clear in their intention to proceed.
May I quote from the email by Captain John Pepple to Delegate Moon, which I just forwarded to all of you? "I am opposed to the cha- proposed changes to the intersection. The shifting of the lanes on the westbound side of Carroll Avenue and the proposed painted, painted island on the eastbound side would severely compromise our ability to respond to incidents in the eastbound direction while there's traffic packed up." That's our fire department. That's our ability to respond.
Thank you very much, Mr. Sherman, for coming in tonight. And the staff will be following up.
By tomorrow, it'll be done.
Good citizen, thank you.
By tomorrow, it'll be done.
Thank you. Okay, we're going to reconvene, um, the discussion regarding, um, the budget. So, are there any, oh, Councilmember DiBala, I'm sorry, we cut you off. Councilmember DiBala, you have the floor.
Thank you, um, to the point that was just raised by Mr. Sherman. I, I had, uh, actually raised this, a similar question earlier today. So, uh, when I saw the notice, uh, and, um, I would very much appreciate the city staff doing what they can to work this out. I had been under the impression that the city council had a majority of council members that wanted, um, the city to, uh, to, to work, work with SHA to resolve this before it actually happens. Um, and so I would appreciate that, that to be, that to be the case.
Everybody knows, again, they don't care. They don't care.
To the table and to the line item, um, that we were discussing on, uh, street maintenance, I, I want to just make sure I understand. So in the current budget, there's 525,000 dollars, uh, allocated, um, out of the general fund to street maintenance. And this proposes to add an additional 125,000 dollars. So I have two questions. Did I get that right? That the 525 is in the current budget, is the, in the, from the general fund?
So.
And this, and this proposes to add an additional 125 in ARPA?
So it, uh, Councilmember DiBala, in the, in the CIP, uh, it show, it, there is 425 that is from the ARPA fund currently and 100,000 from the general fund. When we talked, uh, a little bit about stepping out our ARPA reliance on ongoing, for, ongoing expenditures, uh, being about 1.2 million in FY24 to si- about 600,000, 625,000 in FY25. Uh, 425 of that stepped out ARPA reliance was in this line, in this street maintenance line.
Okay, thank you for clarifying. And, so then my second question is understanding that we have underfunded by the, um, estimate made in 2004, which is a while ago. Um, we've under, underfunded the last few years by that estimate. Understanding that and not having the list of roads in front of me, so I'm, I'm not able to look at it, I, which I would normally be doing. My question is, do, uh, uh, how far down the list do we go in terms of the quality of the road? If we do that much work? Six hundred and fifty thousand dollars worth of road maintenance? What does that take us from roads that are terrible to poor, to marginal, to good, to excellent? Where's the breaking point in terms of the current quality of the road if we spend 650,000 dollars in this current year, in the next year?
Thanks for the question, Councilmember DiBala. I'd be happy to send you the, um, Excel list that was shared previously with the list of, uh, roadways and, um, the pavement condition. We've got about 34 miles of road, so as you can imagine, there's a lot of ratings amidst those blocks. Because we've underfunded, um, over the course of the past 20 years, we have made improvements particularly early on. So we don't have any roads that fall in the failed category, which in the early 2000s, that was not.
Goodness for that.
That was not the case. We had numerous roads in, in failed condition. But, um, because we've not been able to, um, uh, resurface the roads that we would have in the past five years in particular, uh, we've got roads that are in far worse shape than we would have wanted to have before we resurfaced them. So, um, I can't say without the list in front of me as well, um, how far down that gets us. But we, we, we will, it'll certainly be, um, used very well, but, uh, we'll still have roads that are in a rating condition below what we would like to have, even with the expenditure of these funds next year.
Okay, so yes, I'd appreciate that so that I can, I can double, uh, double-check on that. Um, and then my last question is, I, I admit to still having some confusion about the recommendation that was in the, the finance group's, um, let me rephrase. The, the budget resolution that we did at the end, uh, end of June last year, in which we said that we wanted to take a look at the vehicle, replace, uh, a few, a few policies, including street maintenance policy. And there was a work group, and the work group did some work, and they produced a memo that essentially, as I read, it says, "And we want to review the policy." So, I'm a little unclear as to where we are with reviewing the policy by which we decide which roads need to get replaced and how often. And the reason I bring that up is because I, I appreciate that there's probably a backlog and that we could use this money well. But if there were some other ARPA-related need that we wanted to use money for, I'm wondering what, what the, you know, where, where the break line, where the, where the, where the must-have line is, as opposed to the wanna-have line. Um, I'm sure you don't have an answer to that, but I, you might have an answer, somebody might have an answer on the policy review issue, whether that's something we still need to do as a city staff and council.
Councilmember Gibson?
I'll just say, as, as a member of that, that committee, that, uh, uh, I don't think we, we, I'll see if, I don't think we, it, it was an exhaustive study. We did, uh, we did some comparisons with other cities and, and asked the staff. But I would, I would agree with you, um, Councilmember Dibala, that reviewing that policy a little bit in more depth in the full council would be helpful.
Yes, thank you, Councilmember Gibson. I think, um, one of my takeaways from the recommendations that were made from the finance working group is that there are a couple of things that would warrant, um, council action in order for us to, um, establish a policy, and it's, it's actually not something we're gonna be able to do through the budget, right? So, um, I know that one of the questions that, um, that was raised was around the equipment replacement reserve. How do we, what policies do we want to put in place in terms of amount of monies that are allocated in preparation for the future electrification of our fleet, and what that looks like, and making sure that we're allocating enough monies to make sure that when products become available, we're not busting our budget to buy them, right? Or if there are other opportunities or other ways for us to think through acquiring equipment, lease versus buy, all of those things. So, I think that all of those aspects are, um, are points of, of policy that we'll need to dive deeper into over the course of the summer in order to provide staff, um, with a direction in terms of how we want them to prioritize, um, prioritize the work. City Manager Disperdo, anything to add to that?
Yes, I would agree with all of that. In addition, I might add that it will also be important, I think, to have a conversation amongst the mayor council and the public about the source of funds for that purpose, for, for, uh, the E R R. Presently, all of that is, uh, really, uh, been, and in recent years, for sure, uh, been coming from reserves. And that is not ultimately sustainable. How do we begin to move at least a portion of that increasingly to a sustainable source such as the general fund, which is tied to the property tax, versus relying on having sufficient reserves above the mayor council's established policy level, in our case seventeen percent, uh, to fund that very, very important category?
Okay, thank you. So, we, we still have some homework to do in terms of policy issues we identified last year, and that's fine. I just wanted to get that out while we're talking about the dollar amounts. Thank you.
Um, and so, Councilmember Gibson, do you have another question?
Just, uh, I, I actually think that the, or I would like us to consider, uh, a, a, a resolution similar to what we did at the end of our last, last year's budget, which looked at whether it's working committees or something of that sort. But I think we might want to resurrect that, that kind of an approach in, in, in a, in a resolution.
Great, thank you, Councilmember Gibson. I was thinking along those same lines, particularly as it relates to, we say every year, let's look and try to identify, um, alternative approaches to revenues, and we never end up being able to do it. So, so maybe if we, we kind of solidify it a little bit. And so, I am gonna kind of steal Councilmember Small's thunder a little bit, because there are two points. There is two, there are two points, um, I'm not exactly sure to shadow where they need to be in terms of the reconciliation list, but there's a couple of points that give me a little bit of heartburn. One is, um, I am increasingly nervous about our red light camera, speed light camera revenues, and tying, um, those revenues to, um, our, our traffic planner position. And so, just trying to, at least in this initial year, um, just trying to get some clarity, and you all don't have to provide answers now about whether or not, um, we, it's appropriate to budget for that position out of speak, out of those, out of that revenue stream this year, when I know that the revenues haven't realized what we wanted. We slammed a lot of projects into that, uh, that revenue source last year, and I'm trying to be mindful of learning my lesson. And there's one that I don't want to find, one particular thing that I don't want to find, that we don't have enough money in that revenue account to, um, to do, and that is pay our traffic planner person. Yeah.
I would say that, uh, there's other cost categories assigned to red light that I would, if, if push came to shove, and say the program started later and the revenue was further delayed, which is always technically a possibility, that there's other, there's like two hundred and fifty thousand dollars worth of street and sidewalk work, which is like extra street and sidewalk work that could be reassigned, uh, to ARPA or other, or perhaps even reserves, if you wish, or non-performed. Before, I would recommend that we would touch the much smaller dollar amount that's associated with the transit planner.
Um, and then there's one other F T E-related, um, item, and that for me, and definitely Councilmember Small chimed in, relates to the rec department. Recognizing that we're, we're, we're having space issues, um, but we are also at capacity in the limited space that we have. And I just want to confirm that we, um, don't need to devote any extra resources, particularly as it relates to the teens, um, to make sure that there is resources in the budget in case we need to have any extra F T E there.
Yeah, um, and to, I think, edify the mayor's point. I just, I wanted to kind of go through where you are, Greg, with regard to your, um, both your F T Es and your part-time to see, like, what, what the real census is. Because i- if we were going to, uh, to find a place to add, uh, a, a body, I would think it would be here, given the increase in, uh, usage that we have, particularly with the teen department. So, I just wanted to go over that part of it with you in public, if you wouldn't mind. So, um, let me see if I can get to where I, one fifty-something. Oh, man, I, I had the budget up, and now I flipped around, and I can't find the page I was looking for. Do you have your ARPA? It'll be easier. Thank you. Um, so, I think you're at one seventy-nine, I think. Aha, that's H C V. One forty-seven, alright. So, on page one forty-seven, where we're talking about, uh, your department, like, one forty-seven, one forty-eight. On, one forty-eight is easier. Um, you have the personnel schedule listed. And so, there are, it looks like you've added a, an administrative assistant position under recreation administration, right?
No.
Or no, have you removed a person?
Yeah, we removed, um, an admin, and that, that person actually went to, uh, city admin.
So, that is, so that is the, uh, person who is now in your department?
Yes.
Passport specialist, yeah. Okay, and so then, um, if you look through here, essentially, um, you're essentially looking at decreases in places where we would rather have you not have decreases. So, I'm just wondering if, uh, you could talk about where you think you are with regard to staffing and what your optimum staffing would be based on the real constraints we currently have.
Right. Um, the reason for the, uh, the other, I believe, is point nine-one, um, reduction in F T Es is that, uh, we have other rooms, um, that, and because of construction, we've reduced staff at different places because we don't need to staff, because the, the building isn't as full as, as needed, for instance.
Okay.
Like, the, the, uh, multi, um, multimedia center. Uh, we no longer have the multimedia center, which we staffed, uh, Monday through Friday, and actually Monday through Sunday. So, that's gone offline until it comes back, um, once construction is completed. So, for the next year and a half, we won't need, um, staffing for the multimedia lab.
Okay.
Um, and, and we've also were able to reduce, um, go down to like one staff person, um, for different things because of the, the space would be leaving us, um, really soon.
I guess, my, my concern, I think, is also is related to, uh, what I thought was a really compelling presentation by you about some of the additional things that may be, uh, coming online for the department in particular, if you end up with some sort of M O U with the school district or the P T As.
Right.
Um, there, uh, even if we don't have building constraints there, I know there are, uh, numerical constraints for how many people you can have per child and all of those kinds of things.
Yes.
And so, I'm, what I think I am getting at, which is what I think maybe you were getting at, is that even though we have some things that are structurally, structural realities with the building, we, we also have some anticipated growth or vision in that department. And I'm curious about where the intersection is. Is that basically saying, yeah?
Right, and, and again, this could be, you know, and it's perfectly fine to say, well, council, this is a twenty-twenty-six problem, right? Like, so.
Yeah, if it's not.
If it's not a twenty-five problem, because we're dealing with all of this construction and space is limited, and we're restricted in that way, but I'm gonna be here in twenty-six to say, now that we have the space again, I definitely need to restore those F T E. That's okay. It's just, I'm, I'm trying to balance knowing, um, that hiring has been an issue. Teens are grow, like, growing.
There's a lot there.
There's just a lot going on with your department, and we just want to make sure that, you know, especially, um, as we are being very mindful of the needs of youth in our community for various reasons, particularly teens, trying to make sure that, that Haven's not by herself with a whole bunch of kids, because we're not able to hire part-time staff.
Right. The, the actual positions for the, the, the normal part-timers are already accounted for in the F Y twenty-five budget.
Okay.
So, that, that's accounted for. The additional half F T E, which would be a part-time career position, um, that would need the benefits added, um, to it. So, the, and that one is just to, um, make the position a little more attractive, because of the, the weird hours, um, that that person would have to work. It would make it more attractive to, to candidates, and we think we can get, um, someone good that's over twenty-one to actually be dedicated to work with teens, um, along with receive benefits. Um, I've actually done this before, um, twice. Um, one, uh, when our sports programs needed a boost, um, uh, many moons ago, we actually, uh, hired a staff person and gave them benefits, and now the numbers in our sports program rose. Um, that, that, that position, I also use that position for our aftercare program, um, the part-time staff with benefits. For our after, aftercare program, when our aftercare program needed a boost and needed someone dedicated that was in the room, senior authority, like an authority figure that would be there consistently, and our aftercare programs, uh, received the boost. So, um, that's what I normally use the, use that position for.
So, you're saying you could still use, uh, position there with some benefits to add some overall flexibility to your future programming?
Well, it, it'll, it'll be dedicated for teens.
Yeah, yeah.
Yes, yes, correct.
Um, and theoretically, could this budget and this fiscal, upcoming fiscal year could, uh, benefit from said person?
That's correct.
Alright, I am adding that to said list of reconciliation items.
Just to confirm, Greg, that's not already in the F Y twenty-five?
No, the point, you know, that's not already in there.
It, it would be a part-time position with benefits, is what you're saying?
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
Twenty, twenty to twenty-five hours, which is normally what it is.
Alright. Um, I, yeah, I'd, I'd like to make sure that that's added to the reconciliation list. Thanks, Greg. I, I kind of figured that, and I, but I appreciate you, like, hemming and hawing about it and making us pull the teeth for it. That's good of you.
Thank you.
I think so, yeah.
Did I answer your question, Mayor?
You did, you did. Thank you very much.
Also boo, though, 'cause, you know, boo, but anyway.
Okay, Councilmember Small, you're, okay? Excellent. What, we may actually be at least done with this first round by? Sure.
Uh, Director Braithwaite, I was wondering if you could, uh, speak about the Eagle Scout replacement of the trail stairs. Um, my understanding is that, uh, that this Eagle Scout approached you and asked if there was any, uh, projects that would be particularly helpful to the city, and so if you could maybe talk about that project and, yeah.
Sure, sure. Uh, well, the city's been blessed with a very active, uh, Boy Scout troop. And Dave Lanier and others should get hats off and kudos for their years of dedication in that regard. So, we've benefited from Eagle Scout projects. I can remember them practically since I started working here. And so, typically, as part of that project, it's supposed to be a fairly heavy lift, uh, for the scout, which typically involves generating, you know, a concept, the idea, planning for it, identifying funding, identifying volunteers, getting it coordinated and done. In the recent past, we've had Eagle Scout projects. They, uh, one built our, um, electronics drop-off shed in front of Public Works. Uh, that was probably two years ago. Another took photos of our bio-retention facilities for our websites. Uh, so these kind of projects happen, um, at, at least more than once a year. Um, in general, we haven't had a, a situation where we funded the Eagle Scouts project. It's been my understanding historically that that's kind of part of, um, the Eagle Scout, uh, initiative, that they need to identify fundraising methods, or get donations, or, you know, canvass their neighbors, or whatever. So, there's been a variety of number of ways that, uh, funding has been developed for this. Um, I was happy to meet with the scout, and we generated a whole, long list of, of potential projects. And then he identified one that he thought might best work for his purposes. So, um, he's, he's also met with our vegetation maintenance supervisor and our urban forest manager. So, uh, we'll make sure that that project, um, meets all, you know, our needs and requirements. If any of you have been on that path, it's, uh, very well-worn and, and definite need of replacement. It was an Eagle Scout probably twenty, twenty-five years ago that built it in the first place. So, at any rate, I'm happy to collaborate with the Eagle Scouts and the program, and we've definitely been the recipients of many similar projects. Um, in the past, we have not provided funding, uh, specific to that, as it's typically part of, uh, part of what the scout is supposed to be developing. Uh, council can, of course, decide otherwise, but that, that's been our approach.
And, uh, I know this is a lot, but do you have any idea about what, uh, sort of cost it would be if the city were doing that without the help of the scouts?
I have not calculated out that. Um, most of it's labor. Um, you know, materials is a component, but the biggest part of that is labor. Thank you.
Councilmember Gibson, and then Councilmember Dibala.
Since we've, oh, since, uh, Jason was able to, to get, uh, Greg to, uh, identify a, and, and perhaps un, unmet need, I'd like to do the same with our city manager, um, or at least bring up an issue. I really, you know, appreciated the, the interest in the performance, um, measurement and, uh, plan, and, and so I consulted with you with, with regard to this, this item. I guess my question is, uh, from what little I know, there's considerable, there's often software involved. And, um, I haven't, I really haven't. And, um, I haven't, I really haven't a clue how much that would cost. And I'm wondering whether it makes sense for us to, I mean, I think this is direly needed and that we would have both the consulting, um, assistance, but also some software.
At some point in the project, that may be, uh, the case. Uh, some cities have utilized the form of an Excel spreadsheet that what I'd have to look into is whether that's already within our capability without having to procure a separate type of package. Uh, I, that might be part of what a consultant helps us determine through the course of the project. In which case, if there's something beyond which we could afford, uh, from existing line items, we might include it in a budget amendment during the course of a fiscal year. Or we might actually have sufficient funds to acquire what I would imagine is a fairly simple package to, uh, to do that. But you are correct that, uh, having some sort of a tool at some stage, uh, will be, uh, probably necessary.
Thank you.
Councilmember Dibala.
Yes, thank you. Um, three things. Uh, thank you, Councilmember Small, for bringing up the, the rec, the team question, cause I was gonna bring it up. Um, and secondly, I, on this item of performance measures, I thought I heard the city manager say that this could be ARPA-funded, this could be somewhere else. Where are the somewhere else's that you were thinking? Or do you not need, not wanna say right now?
No, I, I can follow up on that. Uh, Councilmember Dibala, they, I, I guess I, I've sort of identified two possible ones.
Okay.
One could be, uh, just a, you know, there's just a, a, a decrease in the total amount of reserve that we have. So it would go into just ge- as a general fund expenditure. Um, that could be one. Um, the second, Susan identified that there is a, a slight surplus within our speed and red light camera fund. Um, we could, rather than earmark this specifically for that, what we've done, as the city manager mentioned earlier, um, is move some programs into that fund from the general fund that are public safety-related and traffic safety-related. Um, so we could try and identify, there's about forty thousand, uh, of a surplus right now. Uh, identify some additional, uh, transfers to the fund. Of course, you know, with that is the same concern that, you know, these are, uh, revenue projections. Specifically with the red light camera portion of this, uh, we have a pretty good sense what the speed camera revenues will be. But the red light revenues, we just haven't started collecting yet. Um, and so the, uh, so there is a risk associated with that. But those are the two other options that you have outside of our, that I was.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
I know it's, it's not a large amount of money and it's a necessary project. I just wanted to complete that thought. Um, the third thing, which, uh, is my last thing, um, getting back for a moment to some of the issues we discussed last year in terms of, uh, vehicle policy electrification and which just came up again tonight. Um, I understand there's been a fair amount of staff discussion about, uh, fleet electrification and whether we need, what kind of policy we need, what kind of work, whether it's consulting work, whether it's staff work that we need to do that, cause we need to do that. We don't wanna wait another year. Um, and then not be able to take advantage of, of things because we're not ready. So, um, to that end, I would like to ask for a recommendation from, um, sustainability programmer from Public Works about what you, uh, think is the best route. If I understood from informal conversation, um, and apologies to the police chief for not having had time to catch up with him on this issue yet. Um, but as I understood it, it might be more of a matter of staff time to do the work as opposed to consulting expertise to tell staff that we have who already have done a lot of work in this area, what it is they need to do. To that end, I'm wondering if we can put on the list somewhere, um, a, a part-time intern for the sustainability program specifically to focus on this question of moving this emerging issue forward, uh, this coming fiscal year. So we don't miss the boat on all the grant money that is coming down the pike, uh, for which we're not quite prepared in terms of having a, an electrification plan for our fleet. So, um, kinda wordy, sorry. So I'd like to add to the, I, I don't know if it's the general fund or the ARPA fund, a part, um, a part, a part-time intern or whatever else the city staff recommends instead to move the issue of fleet electrification planning forward for our city. Cause I think the time is now. Thank you.
Um, that is quite a large nut to crack in a number of different ways. Um, as, as you mentioned, Councilmember Dibala, there is, uh, federal funding, um, available as well as state funding. Um, our sustainability manager, um, attended an NLC boot camp and is, um, actively identifying potential grants. Currently, they are in the realm of EV charging. Uh, we also have, um, funds in the FY twenty-five proposed budget to support EV chargers for commercial and multifamily properties. So there's a lot of activity going there and, and there is just too much, too much happening too fast. We're collaborating with a CAG grant. We just met with the county on a, an application that they're doing. And there's others that we've identified ourselves. So there's a lot of moving parts currently happening. Um, the need for EV charging is not going to change regardless of the fleet, both for public charging as well as, um, city vehicle charging. So that's gonna be a need, e- even if we don't have our fleet transition policy, um, clearly spelled out and identified yet. Um, as, as mentioned earl- in some earlier meetings, um, the current plan is to transition vehicles as they are eligible for replacement. Uh, that's the fis- fiscally, uh, sound method. We don't wanna get rid of our vehicles before they, their expected life is over. So we have some pacing and some time there. You can look at our fleet and understand sort of the, the time and the evolution that we're gonna have. So I don't share the panic that I think I'm hearing from you, Councilmember Dibala, about we have to have it figured out. We have to have it figured out right now. Uh, if you look at the CIP, you'll see over the next five years what vehicles we have scheduled for replacement. Um, so there's a pacing there that, um, I just wanna make sure everyone is aware of. Uh, currently in the, in the realm of sedans and, and passenger-type vehicles, the EV market is sound, is solid. Um, many of us are driving EVs. We're transitioning, uh, city administrative cars to EVs when they're scheduled for replacement. So that's happening anyway. And, and currently our experience has been that the funding level we have in the equipment replacement reserve is su- is su- uh, sufficient to, um, cover the cost of those replacements. The next category of vehicles is, is police vehicles. And I really think the chief, uh, should speak to that. I don't wanna speak for him. Uh, but we're not there yet in terms of, of known quantities, reliability. Then we all understand there is a Chevy pursuit-rated vehicle currently. Uh, but we wanna see it in action. We wanna see, um, other departments tested out. Departments with far larger budgets and far larger fleets than ours. Because our fleet is so finite and, uh, and essential, we don't wanna risk, uh, loss of, uh, vehicles in a early transition. So we're going to observe and watch and gather information. In the meantime, there's a lot of policy work we need to do and we need to gather information for other jurisdictions that are a bit ahead of us in terms of, um, take-home vehicle policy, charging policies, charging at home, charging in the city, um, lots of different, uh, avenues regarding this. That is part of what we envision our fleet transition policy and program to be developing in FY twenty-five, working on those types of policies using other jurisdictions for that kind of information. And then the last category of vehicle is the large vehicles. And that's what we've seen with our EV sweeper. The expense for an EV vehicle is quite high. We were willing to take the risk on the EV sweeper and we've been very well pleased with this operation because although it was very expensive, it, it doesn't have the large capacity that something like a trash truck or an F four fifty equivalent, um, dump truck would have. Uh, so again, the market's not quite there yet for the larger vehicles. And with our understanding that they're, we're gonna be replacing them based on, uh, when our vehicles age out, we've got some time associated with that. Um, and that will be, um, at a whole nother layer of complexity in terms of the EV charging capacity. Because the type of charging that you use for passenger cars is not the type, the type of charging you have to use for large vehicles. So there'll be a whole other, um, avenue of research and understanding about the electrical needs in our public works yard, for instance, in order to enable charging of large vehicles. So that's coming over the next several years. And again, as I mentioned, there's lots of federal funding, state funding, county funding, a lot of grant activities. Um, and our sustainability manager is trying to keep track of that and partner with organizations. Um, one of the things that's quite not easy to understand on paper is we're not very competitive as a two-point-two-square-mile, um, city. Um, our, our fleets, if you look at the, uh, mileage that our administrative vehicles drive, they don't get any miles at all. So you can't make the rate of return argument. You can't say this is gonna save huge on greenhouse gas reductions cause instead of, you know, twenty thousand miles a year, our, our admin vehicles are going twenty-five hundred miles a year, right? So we can't make the greenhouse gas reduction argument. We can't make the fuel savings argument, um, a- at least quite as convincingly as jurisdictions that are larger, who have these administrative vehicles. Or for instance, commercial vehicles that are doing deliveries and they're driving twenty, thirty thousand miles a year. That's not us. So we have to kinda understand our lane, understand our role. And that's why it's really critical for us to partner with larger jurisdictions who can make the economic argument. And then we can be part of, uh, that process. So lots more to come on this topic. It's, it's very detailed and complex.
City manager.
Thank you. And all of which is what led me to, to, thank you for, for spelling that out. Um, I was not trying to convey panic. I was trying to convey that, um, a little bit of funding, in my view, for planning now, um, will pay off later rather than waiting till it all hits us. Um, and so I was proposing, rather than, um, most of you know I was talking about adding money to do a study or to hire a consultant. I'm talking about adding a little bit of money to have a part-time planning intern to do some of this work, to do the policy work, the gathering of info, the tracking of so forth. Because right now what we have is you and Dory and the police chief. And that's our electric vehicle program. So I feel like we need a little bit.
Standard number for this?
A little bit more there.
Councilmember Small, given that Councilmember Dibala is virtual, please stand down and allow her to finish her.
Yeah, I was just trying to ask her if she knows.
Yeah, so what's your question?
My question is, 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 is there like a number that you know for what the intern, like, costs?
Under the, yeah, thank you. I'm under the impression that, um, and double, it needs to be double-checked, but an intern's a whole lot cheaper than a consultant and it's more like twenty thousand for a part-time inter- intern for a year. Because they don't get benefits. They are temporary. It is a focused.
I'll support that.
Project.
Yeah, currently within the FY twenty-five proposed budget, we have point, uh, four-eight uh, amount of time of a sustainability intern. We had originally hoped to get a full-time intern, but it was cut in half. Um, so, uh, we could certainly, um, staff up, uh, a full-time intern. It would be easier to hire a full-time intern than a part-time intern. Uh, that said, I imagine there is a, you know, a, a large number of, uh, particular, um, subjects that they can work on, including the EV transitions. Um, because it is a highly technical subject, um, finding an intern that's gonna be capable for that, there's certainly information that they can gather about what's happening around the country or other jurisdictions, looking at policies, all that stuff very much right in the wheelhouse of an intern. Um, but I think we have the in- internal resources within our police department, our vehicle, uh, maintenance division and our sustainability manager to kind of get the technical aspects of those things pulled together.
Right. Thank you.
So, yeah, so again, I would like to put it on the reconciliation list either under general fund or ARPA, wherever you, you think it should fit.
So I just wanna triple-check with the deputy city manager to just make sure that what we're talking about here is a half FTE increase for the purpose of the intern for the sustainability program, so.
Yeah, correct. Yeah. So in, during the budget process, we, we cut it in half to either be a part-time or just a six-month intern position, um, well, under the sustainability manager. Um, and so if we restored it, we have those numbers available. It's about twenty thousand would be the increase.
Okay, great. Um, Councilmember Hozak?
Thank you. Um, are we, are we good on that point?
I think so.
I was gonna move on to a different point. No, I'm not actually. I'm just gonna teeny, teeny tiny, I think. Um, not like last year. Nothing like last year, at least not today. Um, I, uh, I just have two, two, two things, unrelated things. And since we already talked about one of them, I'll start with that one. Um, and I'm sorry, Director Braithwaite is gonna come back to your wheelhouse. Um, it, it goes back to the, that Eagle Scout line item that, um, Terry Miss Stevens and I had just tentatively put on there. The, um, I was wondering, uh, two aspects of that. One is what, do we have any history as a city of developing a list of projects for, um, youth, girl, girl scout, Eagle Scout, Gold Award scouts? Any you, any youth that might be wanting to do projects or even volunteers who might, where we, where we as a city say, these are actually things that we think could be done by a approximate, you know, timeline and group of people that, you know, in, in the scale of, of that kind of a project based on our experience? Does that exist? Has that ever been?
Not that I'm aware of.
Okay.
Uh, many, many years ago, when the city had a volunteer coordinator, there was an effort at addressing not really projects like that, but sort of staff support and other needs that volunteers could do. But since that position has been long vacant, I'm not aware of any list like that that anyone maintains. That being said, I think both for my department as well as others, if an interested student or community member contacted the department, we'd be able to ask them what they're interested in, what their skill set in, and be able to give them a long list of potential ideas.
Yeah, that's, no, that's great. And I, I know you've expressed that to me before and I'm really grateful to you on behalf of the Boy Scouts and Girl Scouts that I have been, uh, working with to put these projects together. The reason I'm asking that is it strikes me that, um, you know, I, I gave it a little bit of thought to, um, on this particular item. It's very particular. I really believe in the spirit of scouts working hard or youth or whatever to, to leverage funding. I think that's a key part. Their labor and gathering a team of people who are willing to stand behind them is also really, really a great thing for us to leverage as a city. So I'm just thinking that if I were gonna sort of maybe fix this line item that we've put forward, I mean, I might like to see it be a more open item of this is a youth, uh, project of priority to the city, uh, line item that we put in the budget for X amount that is presumed to go to, you know, any number of people who might reach out to the city over the course of the year for any such projects. And I think it would be very important to me that these projects would be of value to the city and not just anything that somebody puts forward. Um, and, and perhaps that could just, you know, the wording could be changed or we could consider a different amount. I, I, I need to think on that one more this week, but I just wanted to give some closure to that conversation in terms of where I'm headed with my support for that line item.
Uh, just to clarify, are you looking for a larger dollar amount so that it would be competitive with other, other applications? And accept applications for that?
I, 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 I don't know. I'd welcome a discussion because it's new. I just, I'm, it's a brainstormer. You know, I, I do see the limitations of this. Like, I, I don't think it's a great practice as a city to say, yeah, we'll absolutely pay for that. The only reason I, in this case, is, uh, we had sort of said, this is something our employees need. And so we're getting free labor. So for us to put forward the money for the materials, to me, made a lot of economic sense also. But I think that there is great value in encouraging such scouts to also be, be, be encouraged to, to raise some of their own money as well. So, um, I, I don't know what the best process is. I welcome anybody reaching out to me either now or later, um, to discuss that a little bit more. Um, and if I can move on to a different point, I think we could just leave it as it is right now. Um, and then, uh, my other, my other line item that I'm sorry, I haven't had a chance to put in writing and I'm just gonna lay it out now. It doesn't have a dollar value, is as we're moving into election season, season, um, I have a couple of, of thoughts that, uh, have been on my horizon, but we haven't been able to further the conversation. Um, and another thing has risen up. One is about communications. Um, I know that, uh, Councilmember Gibson and I had talked about having a more robust conversation once we got a new city manager online about how to, um, support existing council members once they come in, uh, to, to be more able to do communications such as their own website. Um, and knowing that different, uh, different candidates are gonna have different economic means to pay for such things. And making sure that we're trying to level the playing field a little bit about, um, how different council members can communicate with the public. Um, so I, again, I, I need to do a little more homework and work with everybody. I'm just laying that out there so it doesn't come as a surprise later. Um, and meanwhile, we had somebody reach out, um, um, SJ, if, if some of you know him, who, who sent an email to the council that wasn't further discussed to my knowledge. Um, but I thought it was a really novel idea about, um, he, I, I think all of us might be able to say that e- every. that every candidate that's run, I think he gave everybody about $25 just because they were running to promote good... Everybody gets an opportunity to run and gets a little bit of support. I think he was one of the only people I'm aware of that went and did that. It was really helpful to me as a candidate. And he said, you know, "Is there any way that the city might ever entertain doing... Making a fund that would play a similar role as the kind of generous gift he gave to many different candidates just for the sake of running, to promote good, you know, lots of people getting on to the ballot?" And I might, since this is just such an important value to so many Compark residents, the value of elections and encouraging people to run and have a robust democracy, I think it's a worthy conversation, even if it were more of a symbolic amount of money. And I would just welcome anybody, you know, dialoguing about that. It seems like a pretty good year to do that, given what's happening with our democracy. So I don't have a dollar value. Again, just saying this because I don't want it to be a surprise. That could be one light item, as I see it, something that we use towards elections and/or communications of candidates to sort of just make a more level playing field.
Councilmember Hanzag, just in response to that last item, I think I saw that response, and I thought it was a great idea. You know, conceptually, I think the devil will be in a lot of the details as it pertains to our election law, as it pertains to what we can legally do in terms of providing funds to candidates for elections and then overseeing not only how they're managing their donations, which we're required to do, but how they may also be managing our dollars, which creates an added complexity. And so I appreciate the idea and in no way trying to stop from pushing the idea forward as a conversation for this budget. But I do think that that conversation should probably follow recommendations from our Board of Elections and conversations with our city attorney around the legalities of something like that.
Point well taken.
This is councilmember Dibala on this topic. May I have the floor?
Councilmember Dibala, go ahead.
Thank you. I can't see anybody else, so I can't see if somebody else's hand is up or something. I apologize if I'm cutting somebody off. I have, S.J. is a ward two resident, and I have been thinking about this a bit. Two things, public financing is something I would be interested in exploring. The budget is not the place to do it, but I'm happy to work with anybody on taking a look at it. Public campaign financing at some level. And as far as support for council for communications, I would need to hear a little bit more about what actually would cost money, rather than getting advice from our IT staff on what free websites are available, et cetera. So that's just my view on that. Thank you. My questions on that.
Thank you, councilmember Dibala. And also just for staff, in terms of the item around council support, I know the council usually receives some aspect of a budget. And so it might be helpful for members of council to just be familiar with the amount of money that we, as a council, receive as a budget that we typically use for things like conferences, registration, all that good stuff. But whether or not there may be possibilities for us to work within our own budget to make sure that folks who need access to certain things like websites and things like that, that whether or not they're... What the cost would be for something like that and whether or not it would be something we could easily support in the line item we have. Councilmember Small... I'm sorry, councilmember Missimons.
Thank you, mayor. You know, I initially introduced the reconciliation item for support of the Eagle Scout project. And I continue to strongly support that. I did it with full knowledge. We do have a grant program that we... The city manager has included funding in there for grant projects here in the city. But I think this particular project falls into a different category, and not just because it's a youth program, but also because it is on a different scale than what we typically look at for the grant programs themselves. I still, like I say, support this project. If the council wanted to discuss requiring some level of funding from the scout himself to do fundraising, be interested to hear the suggestions. But for right now, I would like to just leave it on the reconciliation list at the level it's suggested. Thank you.
Thank you, councilmembers Missimons, councilmember Small.
Thank you, mayor. And Chief, if you could be prepared to address two things in the budget. The first one is, I would like to reiterate the fact that at least I remember that we kicked your vehicles to this year and didn't get your vehicles when you needed them already. And so I know we've had at least some degree of public comment about that premise. And I'd just like to tell you, in general, I'd be supporting all of those vehicles. But if you could talk a little bit about where the fleet is first, and then I do have a follow-up.
Absolutely. So we're still awaiting vehicles from two fiscal years ago, also last year. I think it's nine outstanding vehicles. All of the vehicles that we're attempting to acquire this year are marked patrol vehicles and desperately needed. We currently have vehicles on our fleet that were scheduled to be deadlined through our Vehicle Replacement Committee. So we are in desperate need of new vehicles, especially marked vehicles. And it comes into play a lot of times when we don't have spare vehicles, when officers' vehicles are involved in an accident. We just had a vehicle that was scheduled to be deadlined that needs a new engine. The city's not going to spend $8,000 to $10,000 on a new engine for a vehicle that needs to be deadlined. So all of these vehicles, you know, we need for our operations. We had a meeting yesterday, the city manager, public works director, the maintenance manager, and councilmember Gibson, just speaking about vehicles and moving forward and some of the things that councilmember Dibala spoke about earlier. One of the things we talked about is the additional cost if you continue to push vehicles off. From year to year, the price of vehicles can go up anywhere from 10 to 25%. So we need to factor that in as well. When we do the ERR, we're looking at what a vehicle costs from year to year. We factor in 5%, but when you keep on moving it back and back, we're adding additional costs. And that's not just for the vehicle, that's also for the, you know, the parts that go with that, whether that's the mobile data terminal that goes in it, whether that's the radio, whether that's the lights that go with it. So, you know, we're very hopeful that we get the vehicles that are due this year. And it was originally going to be seven. And now it's the two that were added from last year as well.
All right, thank you. And again, I just, having dealt with this as an issue in a previous life, I'd just say that I believe you. And you talk about it, because I know how that works. And it's a drag to have to try to figure out what you're going to do with a car that's basically almost dead. Unless it's named Betsy and you really love it, then you, like, then you do shit or things to it. Anyway, apologies. Now, the other question that I have is related to the overall census of the department and, I guess, workflows would be an appropriately benign way of talking about it. Because there are some difficult realities about where the nation finds itself with regard to the structural realities that some people having, and some people having way less. And so because we deal with that on a fairly regular basis, at least in the Confidence Ward Six, I did want to talk a little bit about the census and give you an opportunity to articulate what the anticipated needs, I don't know, 30,000-foot level or whatever advocacy for the, I guess, the size and operations of the police department, including even the senior staff structure. Because we've had all those things come up at one point or another in recent memory, if you would. Thank you.
I'll touch on two things. First of all, I'll touch on the senior structure. When I first got here, six years ago, we rearranged the structure to have a defined deputy chief. We also added lieutenants. We felt that was a much better command structure, and it's been very successful for the police department. Recently, we did a compensation... Excuse me, an organizational assessment study for the city. And it came back, ironically enough, that they recommended that we have 43 FTEs, 43 police officers. Now, that was done during our record-low numbers of crime. And a lot of those assessments are based off of calls for service, based off of crime. As everyone knows, we've had a significant increase in crime. You know, my concerns are, number one, recruiting people to come here. We've been successful at that. But also keeping people here. You know, we talked about this, I think, when I presented the annual report. We talked about this last week when I presented the police budget. You know, we're dealing with some agencies, larger agencies that are giving signing bonuses and so on and so forth. So I think we need to take steps, number one, to incentivize our police officers to want to work here, whether that's through, you know, through a pay structure, a pay scale that has less steps, which we were able to successfully acquire through the most recent collective bargaining agreement, whether or not that's looking at other things that the city is going to look at, a cost-neutral kind of retirement, healthcare for retirees. But I think that's really important. Right now, we have been successful with having quality people here. I just want to make sure that we, number one, are able to attract quality people to come here. Number two, and just as important, is to keep those people here in the city. So we're going to be looking at different strategies for that. Obviously, we're going to evaluate everything that we need to do. But I think more importantly, what we need as a city from a public safety standpoint is not about policing. It's about understanding what, and I say this all the time, what are the root causes that are causing people to commit crime? And until we take a holistic approach to what those causes are, we're going to be completing the cycle. When you talk about what's the census and what is the need of a large majority? Because I don't think a lot of people understand the desperate need of some of our residents. There's a lot of people that show up here every week, and I tend to say the majority are more wealthy, you know, people that live in the city, the people that have three or four jobs or, you know, aren't the people that show up here. So I think, you know, addressing those needs is really important.
Thank you, chief. I would like to say, again, on behalf of that, like at every opportunity that I can, that when I first ran for office, I was talking about how I thought that if we're going to do something here and be known as a quirky place, that we should be a city-state and not some, like, village-y type thing. And I kind of mean that in terms of, like, the vision of the people who work here and their commitment to being here and all the value-add nobility of those kinds of things, character-wise. And I just, I would just like to say, you know, like, that's the reason why I try to be direct on issues. It's the reason why I try to try to figure out what the best way forward is. Because it's noble to do what you're doing. And I appreciate the benefits that we see, particularly in the ward, because we do have to see you more than we used to. And so I just wanted to say that again out loud. I do have one other question that's related to this, and it's related to the crossing guards. And as it looks in this budget currently, it looks like we are staffing those positions. And so historically, it has at least appeared to me like we have had to backfill those positions with officers at times, which I think would then lead to potentially those officers being on overtime to do crossing guard duty as opposed to paying a crossing guard to do it. And so I'm curious about where we are with regard to that as a particular issue. It looks like they're in there,